Meeting for Monday, April 16th, 2018 to order. We have a quorum and the agenda is properly posted?
Yes.
Okay, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, item four is public appearances. Public's opportunity to speak about any subject that's not a specific agenda item. I'm guessing we don't have anybody?
No.
Okay. Item five is discuss and consider the minutes of the regular village board meeting from April 2nd. Any comments, questions, additions? Okay. Motion by Troy, second by John to approve as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Item six is a closed session. At this time, I'll make the motion that the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board enters into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1985 parent one, parent F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, operator's license application. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll need a roll call vote.
Henrik?
Aye.
Limber?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Conrad?
Aye.
Almore?
Aye.
All right, we're in closed session. Okay, back in open session. Item eight, discuss and consider agenda items for joint town and village meeting on April 30th, 2018. I did, actually just earlier today, send Chris Hampton an email asking him if that works, basically because I wanted to wait till after the election and also I told him we're looking at items two besides the four items that they had mentioned. So, just wondering if anybody else would have any other agenda items. I think they had El Margot Park, police activities, annexations, and something about roads, if I remember that. I don't remember specifically what roads are about.
How many vacant lots does the village currently, well, is there everybody?
Yeah, absolutely, because I don't know the number of them.
I went back and looked at their minutes. They've met in closed session at least twice to discuss a potential boundary agreement. And I just wanted to mention that to our board in case you want to do some planning before you meet with them, because these happened back in December and January. So, they've got, I assume that they've developed a strategy. And, yeah, I don't know. I mean, it doesn't say necessarily with the village, but back in November, they said, discuss the response from the village president. And they thought that the meeting was going to be in January, so that was why they had their meetings when they did. They said, how many vacant lots does the village currently have available? How annexations affect town roads and schools? How are the two police departments working together? El Margot Park, roads, maintenance, speed limits, and emergency government ordinance update, which Troy and I are working on. So, that's what they're planning to talk about.
Okay. And I know regarding police departments, I know Chief Labor asked the sheriff's lieutenant or something, and they're not aware of any issues, but if the town has something they want to talk about, that's fine, I guess. Anything else from board members? I mean, that is a fairly comprehensive list, but if we have anything else, we can certainly add it to that agenda. I did ask that the meeting be here, so we have it on, you know, recorded and things like that. And I told him, I think it's not utility landfill, we have a landfill. So, I said we could either start, post it for 6:30, start a little bit late, or post it for 7:00 and whatever, be on time. I mean, whichever way they want to do it.
I talked to Chris, too, and we're going to move it to here.
Yeah.
At 6:30. Take five minutes.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought, so I mean, if we start a little later than posted time.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, that's fine. Does anybody have anything besides those items? I mean, that probably will take up a couple hours, but.
I mean, I wouldn't mind talking about local identity and economic development at some point, but with that list, I think we'll be quite busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could start meeting more regularly.
Yeah.
I think that list would whittle down and we'd have more time, too, John, so.
Yeah. And the boundary agreement thing is kind of a big deal. I mean, if you think of it now, we don't currently have a boundary agreement. So, we're effectively not limiting ourselves, but it depends if we want to limit ourselves with a boundary agreement. Because I think once a boundary agreement's in place, it's a little more difficult to scratch it and start over. Is that correct, Lee?
Well, yes. A village board agreed to a boundary agreement, and about five years later, a new board came along and said, who drafted this thing? And I got to raise my hand, and they decided that they weren't going to abide by it. And the town took us to court, and as the judge said, Mr. Boucher, are you having trouble reading? I said, no, I'm not. And so, it is enforceable. I do think that if you start talking about the boundary agreement, I'd like to suggest that you give us an opportunity to talk with you in a closed session to give you some history, because that, their board is very familiar. They've been together for 10 or 15 years, I think. And in some ways, I just want to, you know, prepare you for some of the questions or some of the areas that they might be asking about.
Yeah, and if we're going to go down the road of a boundary agreement, I think getting input from Matt and Aaron is pretty important on what the implications of that would entail. I mean, we could do that for future agenda item for next time. Just discuss what it means to have a boundary agreement, just so we're all on the same page. If we have no other agenda items, I guess.
Well, let me, you said cooperation between the police departments, is that on the agenda?
That was one of the items that Chris Hampton asked for. He said, police activities in the township, I believe, was the way he worded it. But I think it's more about how their contract officers and our department works together, which, to my point, to my understanding, has been pretty stellar.
Okay, so are we inviting Chief Labor to be there?
I think if Chief Labor wants to show up, absolutely. I mean, it's here, it involves him as well, so if they want to have one of their officers, that's fine. I think they'd have a good dialogue.
I think maybe one thing you might want to do, too, is nail down a date for the next meeting, so it doesn't go on for, you know, I've been out here for two years and we've never met once.
Right, we stopped meeting four years ago.
Whatever that is, I think that we should start that process and keep it moving.
Yeah.
At least quarterly.
Yeah.
And I want to say typically it was a fourth Thursday, a fourth Thursday of the month, but I'm not sure.
Because I think they used to meet once a month.
It was usually monthly scheduled meeting, yeah. I think it was a fourth Thursday, if I remember right. And at some point, we decided it wasn't productive, so we didn't, so. But yeah, that's fine. If anybody has any other agenda items, that's fine. Otherwise, I guess we can tell Chris, or I'll tell Chris, that we'll go with those agenda items and start there.
Would you like other staff to be there?
Yes, absolutely. You, Aaron, Chief Labor, since it's a police issue. And I guess, Sean, I don't know how familiar you are with what they're asking about El Margot Park being a joint park potentially.
It's all I've heard.
I mean, but since the meeting will be here, I guess if you could be here. I'm fine with the concept, I just don't know what they're asking for, so.
It'd be nice to just listen first, because it doesn't sound like we're going to have much information to prepare for.
I did ask Chris if he's got any background information, let us know. But what his desired outcome is, I guess, you know, what his goals are, so. But, all right. Fair enough, unless we otherwise, I guess we'll plan on April 30th. Eight, be update on fireworks ordinance?
Do we need to approve or have a motion? We have discussed and considered the agenda? Or no? We have?
I mean, you probably should. I know, I guess, Matt, was that you that read the agenda items or John? One of you had? Because I was a little off on the one about the rules.
No, you did, actually.
Okay. So, if you want to read those agenda items, we'll make a motion to discuss and consider. I just want to make sure we got them correct.
But the other, I mean, they have to be worded differently. I mean, these are just topics. It's kind of hard to.
I'm trying to make it.
That's kind of why we need more background, because it's hard to put these things on an agenda.
Yeah.
Just discuss, not know.
Start with discussion and then.
Just discuss, so.
They had annexations, how many vacant lots does the village currently have? How annexations affect town roads and schools? Police, how are the two departments working together? Emergency government update. El Margot Park, sharing future development of a larger joint park? When village territory adjacent to it is developed? And then roads, maintenance, speed limits.
So, the one thing that we could probably prepare for is how many vacant lots? In other words, how many lots do we already have? Have we already annexed the land for? Do we know, I mean, is there an easy way to get that?
Yeah, that's not, that's not difficult.
Yeah, I think we could probably get that pretty easily, some of the other stuff.
That prepare for, and then everything else will get clarification on why they need that.
Yeah, unless I get more, between now and then, we'll have it as discussion items and see where they want to go with it.
One issue. Aaron, are they aware of the comp plan update?
Yeah, I met with Chris about a year ago, and he started getting it going, so they're aware of the process. They may not know exactly where we are at the moment.
A lot of the issues that are being brought up here are issues that are being addressed in the comp plan, so I think we should keep that in mind.
That's a good point. Okay, anything else on that? All right, update on fireworks ordinance?
The chief has put together quite a bit of research, which I have, which he's given me, and will have a final recommendation at the next meeting.
Okay.
So, was reading the table? No, this update.
It's just an update, so we're, yeah.
And there was a poll called.
Did we actually have a motion for the agenda? Do we need to have a motion for it? Maybe he just reviewed them, but.
All right, you're right, okay. I'll make a motion to forward the agenda items to Chris Hampton and the town board as read by our village attorney. Second. Okay, motion and a second to send the agenda items to Chris Hampton and the town board as read by the village attorney. Any other discussion?
I would just use the vacant lots as just part of the annexation discussion. I wouldn't spell that out as, I think that's just still what has to talk about. I mean, it's just, it's a part of the discussion about annexation rather than an agenda item.
You okay with that, too?
Yeah, well, and that's fine. I just, you know, it says, you know, discuss, consider, so.
Yeah. Point of order on that.
Sure.
Are you actually going to act on the items that night? Then why would you have consider in there?
I think this is just for posting them as agenda items, not.
We should be just posted as discussed and not as discussing.
Yeah, and it's also, this has been, this was an issue when we were meeting jointly, is that there is no town/village entity. There are two separate entities, and so two separate set of notes ought to be taken. And if you're making a motion, you need the village board to approve a motion, and you need the town board to.
Kind of like the EMS commission setup, sort of. Okay. But yeah, that's a good point. Okay, is it, if everybody's okay with those, I guess all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. And we got our fireworks ordinance update. So, update on building inspector contract. We passed out a template here. As I remember, Tom Veken is chief inspector, but he does use a couple other inspectors, so I'm guessing this would follow through to those people as well.
Right. Here's, first of all, I apologize for not getting this to you sooner. I, as I said in my email yesterday, we've got a family situation with a relative who's dying and spending a lot of time either as a host at the house, delivery person, or quasi-doctor, I guess.
Whatever you're asked to do.
Yeah, whatever I'm told to do. What we've done here, this is based on the earlier contract, although it's considerably updated. I also looked around to different municipalities and found language that we could incorporate in here. I tried to spend some time talking about the duties and the reports that we should be getting. As you may recall, we are suggesting that we change some of the building inspection ordinance, which I think is chapter 130, so that the reporting would be done like in, he would go through the end of the year and make a report like in January or first part of February or something along those lines.
Calendar year kind of report, yeah.
Also, on the permits and fees, there are four exhibits, clearly labeled exhibits, A, B, C, and D. And if you look at exhibit C and D, we have a permit schedule. So, if somebody comes in and they want to know what's it cost to build a residential property, you have all that information that's kind of to your left. And then on the right, it's got village or town. And what that is, is if it says town, he keeps that portion of the fee. So, that's how, that's how he gets paid. The same for commercial. That's exhibit D. And he has, I believe, three or four subcontractors in, or electrical, heating and ventilating, plumbing. And what I tried to do was to use as much of our code as I could, and it actually covers quite a bit of these things, and I just kind of rearranged them. I wanted to make sure that he's got all of his licenses, that anyone that he hires has their licenses. He would be an independent contractor, not covered by our insurance. That's something we, the insurance language, we took from Colonial Club and Ryer Patch at mixed suggestion early, late last year. I'm not sure if all of this even applies, but we'll also run this past our insurer. And this would clarify, and something that I'd like you to get some thought to is, do you want this to run for a specific period of time? Does it just keep renewing? And we provided here that either party could end the contract with 90 days' notice. And also keep in mind that Tom hasn't seen this yet, so I'm sure that I'll get input from him.
So, with the notice, it's pretty much an at-will contract?
Yeah.
I guess if it's the first contract, I'm fine with putting a term on it. If you want to go, you know, in perpetuity after that, I don't care, but.
Just so I understand, is he an actual employee?
No.
He's a subcontractor of?
He's an independent contractor. He's kind of like me in that sense. I mean, you know, I have a practice outside of the village, or outside of representing the village or other municipalities. And he actually represents, I know he represents the town of Bristol. He did represent the town. So, he does have a business aside from just the village.
So, I guess a separate question, a separate note, though. Why are we paying for him to go to conferences and stuff? See, in the bill list, he's been to some conferences, and why is the village paying for that if this is his side business?
You know, we haven't really visited the compensation question and what is included in the compensation for a long time. And I think that's a perfectly legitimate question.
Especially if he's benefiting not only from us going to these conferences, but the other communities that he serves. I mean, it's, tax being this week's bill-ish, so.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. Yeah. And then with the other people, so we wouldn't have contracts with his subcontractors? It would be his problem, or?
Yeah, well, I can do it any way you want. What I set it up as is that he has the right to name these inspectors of, you know, heating and ventilating, which was, did a lot of inspection work for quite a long time. And Tom has the right to say, okay, these are my, kind of my sub-building inspectors, and they have these different areas. He would be responsible then for making sure that they have insurance. They would have to give the village copies of any insurance that they carry on a yearly basis, as does he. But again, we can, you know, I don't know for sure how he really splits things up. I do know he gave us a list of like this report that I quoted last time, and.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Matt.
You can finish that. I'm not aware of us paying for any conference for Tom.
He actually has a kid that works in public works. That might be where you're picking up the last.
Was it Dave Veken, maybe, or Tom?
I don't know. Blood to my vouches to me, but this. Okay, all right, then my mistake.
Okay.
Yeah, that could be, but, okay.
Yeah, I don't know if any of his certification's being updated. I'm not aware of that. I think that's all on him.
No, that's great. I guess I saw that.
Good.
Right, the last name, and it goes, there aren't that many Veken's out there, I didn't think of, so.
There are, coincidence.
Yeah, I know two now, yes.
As far as subcontractors, I'm fine with him having it be his problem to get these people, make sure they've got their paperwork and stuff, rather than us having to do it, I guess. I mean, I know, go ahead, Matt.
Point on that. Maybe I'm missing it, but I don't see in here where the subcontractors are required to meet the same requirements for insurance and for hold harmless identification release provisions. Maybe I'm just missing it?
We could add that into there, because that's probably a good point.
That's a good, if I didn't include, I will.
I'm just doing a pretty quick review here, so.
Well, it was a pretty quick putting it together, so I'll bring it to you tonight, too.
That would be a suggestion, and that we make sure that we're additional insured on every single person that's doing anything on behalf of the village.
And I do think it's important to address the insurance issues for Tom and for these people, because, you know, that's not maybe their main focus. And so, sometimes it's like, yeah, I've got everything I need. Well, maybe you do, and maybe you don't, so.
Exactly. And then he has to decide if he wants to babysit that process, or if he wants them to come directly to us and contract through us, I guess. Then as far as the term, I mean, is anybody, have any suggestions for an initial contract?
Question, is this a, are these fees, is that like a flat schedule? Or is that something that we determine? Or is it something we can put out to bid? Or how does that work? Is this a set?
Well, I think that the fees are actually set by the village board. And again, John, it's a great question, because they haven't really regularly come before the board. And so, that's the idea, is that each year, they would come back to the board as part of the report, and then the board would decide if they want to keep the fees the same or not.
Some of the fees are like seven cents a square foot, four cents a square foot, I mean, but yeah, it's worth keeping tabs on them.
I have a question that, so Lee, where's that, where are you incorporating in that the permit fees into the agreement? And what, where's the provision that says?
Under, Article four, that's the third page, permit fees. I made reference to, and I, down at the bottom, Mick, is where it says the building inspector's fee shall be calculated as follows. These have got those to me, and I haven't incorporated them yet, but that's where that would go.
Okay, where the lines are involved, okay.
My question more is just, when these get updated, that should be something the board just does. And it should, seems like that should just be automatically.
Like an annual thing?
I guess I'm not seeing that. Does that mean we have to come back and amend the disagreement every time we make a change to a?
No, no, I would just say that the building permit fees are determined by the village board and will be renewed annually. And that's just something we could include on our agenda, you know, for January each year. Or December, or.
Long agree to do it annually, I guess.
Yes.
Any other thoughts?
Just regarding, I think what Mick was getting to, we don't cover it in, there's two Article fives, actually. It's probably just a typo on the top of page four, and then page five talks about insurance, then hold harmless.
Okay.
So, the hold harmless, I think, relieves us of third-party injuries, i.e. the subcontractors that Tom would hire. And I'm not a lawyer, so I'm just guessing. But the insurance piece, I think what Mick was getting to, if we could maybe throw some of that language in there, that it's subcontractors, I think that's.
Yes, we'll make sure that that, as well, yes.
And the other question I have is with the annual building inspector's report, there is, it looks like, and I don't know if it's his opinion or how this all works, but like a reassessed value of the additions or the upgrades? Is there any sort of documentation, like when you assess a house? I mean, people go out and they take like 18 or 20 photos. You got to face like all cardinal direction and, you know, what's done and things of that nature. So, I'm curious, like, if there's any sort of date, timestamp, photo, or any sort of requirement. So, we talk about records, and he's got to keep a book and number the, you know, number the permits on a regular basis. But are we looking for any sort of additional documentation? And I'm just, I'm just asking, because if we're saying, you know, like someone didn't upgrade their kitchen, and then now the reassessed value is $30,000 more than the current assessed value, I'm guessing that goes to our assessor, who'll have these out in their tax bill.
And if we don't do a reassessment, I guess we don't have that update.
We can get records somewhere.
I mean, we get a square footage sort of a thing, but not really, these are Corian versus Menard, or I don't know, whatever, but.
And I guess on that point, if it's $30,000 kitchen effort, how do we know it's not $50,000?
Yeah.
Or $20,000?
I think the homeowner just gets to put an estimated value of the project or cost.
Really, that's just on the permit, then?
Yeah.
Right, I mean.
And that's what we go off of, is that right? Okay.
And then that spreadsheet kind of that is tracked each month is sent to the assessor.
Okay.
So, they have the building permits.
So, they at least do get that information to the assessor?
They get, yeah, the miscellaneous, the residential, the commercial, any demolition, anything that goes on. They get all of that, so that they can keep it in their records.
Okay. Yeah, if they do that on a monthly thing, I think that's probably fine, as long as we do that.
If you can go, you know, read through this, and I think there's another meeting of this body until May, it would be helpful, and if you have questions as you read through this, please let me know, because I want to, I will be sending a copy of this to Tom tomorrow with this, you know, and I'll get together with him and make sure that everything is worded correctly in here. But I want to make sure the board understands where these fees come from and how they can be changed.
Sure. Yeah, but yeah, just an update on the agenda items, so I guess if anybody has any questions or comments, get them to leave them. We'll go from there, otherwise I think it's a good start. Anything else on that? All right, on to new business, discuss and consider Resolution 2018-04, resolution for stewardship, local assistance program for the development of Glacial Drummond Trail. Sorry, there's a page break in there. I guess, do you have that information, James, you're on the?
I am.
Or Sean, maybe?
Mike's here discussing. He's been working on the grant process.
Yeah. Two months ago, the village board passed a resolution for transportation program, funding for the same project, same trail. And that's a little up in the air right now as to whether it will be funded. It looked like it's not going to be funded by the Madison Metropolitan Planning Organization. They really love the project, and they're sending it to the DOT to direct fund it, which if it is, does go through, will be, bring it back to the 80% funding versus the empty of 60% funding, which is great. But we won't know until September. The TAP grant that's approved to proceed, if it's approved, is, does not include engineering and some things like we've got to move electrical or a phone pedestal and ancillary items. Stewardship grant does. So, the stewardship's 50% funding and will match in as local share with the TAP grant. The TAP grant is federal funding, stewardship is state funding. The DNR also has federal funding, but they know that we're not heading down that path, because we can't put two federal grants together. So, this could increase and really reduce the village's share in this project, so. Both grants, we won't know the outcome until about September. So both grants, we won't know the outcome until about September. So we may have some early word as to, you know, if it's, they're putting it forward for funding, but we won't get a letter until the fall. So there will be no design efforts or anything like that until after. And I think I put the wording in the resolution that you would make your decision after you find out if you're funded. So it's non-binding and just as the TAP grant is non-binding as well, we just wanted to clarify that more.
So no distant time for budget next time?
I think so.
Pretty much, okay.
There is an ad hoc meeting tomorrow night, I believe they had one, so there was one last month and that helped, is helping solidify the route and everything for, for the trail and, but that's kind of the, the only activity needed at this time. I don't know if I know if it's funded.
So for whatever is left over, are we looking for funding for 2019 or 2020?
The, the DOT processes for construction in 2020, to clarify even further, we had in there some land acquisition because Clark Street is what they call a three-rod road instead of four rods. It's only forty nine feet wide instead of sixty-six as a standard. So it's, there's, there's only so much you can fit in the right of way. So we had figured at least two feet of acquisition. DOT called me and asked if, if they were to fund this, would we make a design change to fit the road within the existing right of way? Because there's new federal guidelines that prohibit projects from doing eminent domain even on DOT projects now. So they don't want to put the project at risk and have you have to go kind of approach people and say, are you willing to sell?
Yeah, we don't want it in their hands.
So.
Okay.
They asked if we could make some design changes and the good news is we can, but the DOT needed to approve those and I had that person on the phone as well. And so the distance of the front of path to the back of curb in the project would only be three feet, but it helps guide where to put the parking on one side of the road. And that would be on the same side and adds a buffer. So some of the, I guess, challenges to keep it in the right of way actually kind of help guide the project design and, you know, and keeping it consistent with DOT's guidelines as well and standards. So those are some more details in, in how it would be laid out, but it doesn't require land acquisition. So to answer your question, does that happen in 2020 or 2019? I don't know. We might be able to move it into 2019. And with the DNR, we may have to do something in 2019 to keep the grant valid. So those two things is something we'll continue to look at to line up for consistent construction schedule and with the village's plan to reconstruct that part of Clark Street that's in the village from the park back into the main street area.
It's doable, but it's kind of tight with them.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Mike? Thanks, Mike. All right. I guess at this point, Mike mentioned that he'd taken those contingencies into consideration in that resolution, so I'll make a motion to approve resolution 201804 for the stewardship local assistance program for the development of Glacial Drummond Trail.
One second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Down to item ten, reports from village boards, commissions and committees. Deer Grove EMS commission, there's a discuss and consider item for the contract between Deer Grove EMS and the town of Deerfield. I'll let John and, yeah, John can talk about it, but kind of like what we have currently for Pleasant Springs.
Yeah, so the Ryan Brothers, who has been contracting with the town of Deerfield, sent them and noticed that they were not interested in renewing. They also let them know that they would back out early if they found someone else to do the ambulance service for them. They've come to Deer Grove EMS for really a four and a half year term, half year if we did this, would start on July first through the balance of this year and go through 2023. Very similar in what we have in place now with Pleasant Springs. Revenue schedule is, be bumped up actually what they had in here. Revenue schedule is sixteen thousand one hundred and thirty-three bucks this year and then it sequentially moves up a little bit through the five-year period. The advantage for Deer Grove EMS is now they're getting more revenue from service, plus they're getting these revenues for the service area that we're in a lot of ways already covering because Ryan Brothers is not located here.
Geographically it's a lot better. I mean, but, yeah. And then the town of Deerfield though would not be a voting member then on the commission? It would be a contract?
Strictly a contract, yep.
All right. I mean, I'm fine with it. I'm familiar with the contract from before from being on EMS myself, but I'll let Lee talk about it, too, and see if he has any thoughts on it.
Not so much the contract as just the whole issue. Actually, it's an issue that I would think you'd probably want to bring up at one of these joint meetings and it is, what is the percentage that the village pays vis a vis the town or the town of Deerfield or the village of Deerfield? And are we comfortable with continuing to pay that? I mean, that's, that's really, I, I mean, the, the contract is pretty straightforward. It's just really more a question of this, this whole percentage idea, which has been an, an issue for a number of years.
Right, and I think in a nutshell, let's say try to keep staffing sort of equal both stations, but the issue is we've got the larger volume of calls and things like that here, so, I mean, and I don't know with the new chief if he's looking into that either. I mean, he may have some thoughts on it, too.
Mick has some thoughts.
Yeah, I have a few thoughts on this. One, if you look back at the report that's going to the board next Thursday, you'll see that we're about forty percent of the calls. But what are we paying? We're paying fifty-some percent, right?
Fifty-two, fifty-three, I think.
Yeah, so that's, I think that's interesting. I did a little research on this and put some things together over the weekend on this and I think perhaps the board would like to take a look at this before they make a decision. So I'll pass this around here. And I'd like to put some of this into the record and I think maybe the paper would be interested in some of this also because it's quite interesting when you really start digging into what's going on with, with EMS and this contract. One thing that's real interesting about it is the, and this is not as big a deal to me as some of the other respects of the contract, but you'll notice when you look at the contract that the area, the square miles that we're including here is almost double what we currently have.
Right.
And I'm thinking that if you're doing that, especially when you're driving vehicles, there's going to be a lot more expense dealing with an area that's thirty-four point five square miles versus a village, which is about three and a half square miles.
It's exactly like the police department when we formed their own department. We got rid of the geographical area and higher acuity.
I agree with you fully on that. The, but another really interesting thing about this contract is how it's capped. And I'd like to just read a few things into the record. When you start looking at this, they're paying, they're going to pay an annual payment the first full year of thirty-three thousand. It's not four and a half years, it's actually a five and a half year contract. The first full annual year is thirty-three thousand dollars. Our payment this year is two hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. Their annual escalator goes up one and a half percent for five years, goes up one and a half percent a year. Our escalator last year went up fourteen point two eight percent in one year. So then you look at the annual payments and you look at, at what the equalized values are for the two areas, which I've listed out here, you can see the equalized values. Then you look at what the effective EMS mil rate would be if they were actually paying mills like we are. I don't know how they're doing it there, but let's say that they are doing it. Our mil rate, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong on this, Matt, our mil rate comes out, I think, to point three six eight zero five three mils, what we pay for, for EMS services here. Their effective rate, is it thirty-three thousand dollars, comes out to one point seven two zero two zero mils. So let's talk about how that really works. What that means is the annual payment by the town of Deerfield would actually be seventy thousand six hundred and six dollars instead of thirty-three thousand dollars if the equalized value was assessed at the EMS mil rate that we're currently paying here in the village and that's being paid by the town of Cottage Grove and by the village of Deerfield, which are the three entities that really have an unlimited exposure here. So the annual payment by the village of Cottage Grove, if we were giving you the same deal and John and Troy, I'd really love you guys to go back and say, we want the same deal. If you give us the same deal, we'll go, we'll go for this because if we had the same deal that these guys are cutting, our deal would be a hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and two dollars a year compared to the two hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars we're actually paying. So is this a really good deal or not? Let's start thinking about this. Under the proposed town of Deerfield agreement, residents of the village of Cottage Grove will pay two point one four, two, two point one four times more for EMS services than residents of the town of Deerfield. For example, if you look at, go to zillow.com and you look at the estimates for the median value, value of a home in the village of Cottage Grove, you'll find that they listed as two hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred dollars. At the village of Cottage Grove EMS mil rate, which we're all paying here, everyone in this room, everyone up here is paying this, at point three six eight zero five three, an owner of a median valued home is paying a hundred dollars and ninety-nine cents a year. That's if you have a home that's worth two hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred dollars. At the town of Deerfield EMS mil rate of, of zero point one seven two zero two zero, an owner of a median valued home would pay only forty-seven dollars and twenty cents. As a homeowner in Cottage Grove, I like that rate. That's the rate that they will pay versus us. So what does that mean? I'm going to go back and kind of circle back. That means that we're paying two point one four times as much under this agreement as they are. We have an unlimited cap here. There's no cap on us. And if you, if you recall, when we had the, the prior chief here and I started asking him how I came up with his numbers, he said it was just plug numbers. I know it is. And if you look back at what they have here, what they're going to talk about Thursday, you will find in here that they have basically used up their, this is how they keep operating. They, every year they run a deficit and they, or they have probably the last five years. More usually around a hundred grand a year or so. So they've been, they've been taking that pot of money they have and they've been pulling it down every year. This year they finally hit bottom. Their accountants are saying you should have at least fifteen percent in reserves. This year they are down to fifteen percent. So this year when they go down, if they do the same thing they've been doing in the past, they will use that up. So then what happens when they use it up? We know it's a plug number, right? They'll come back to us and say, you guys need to give us more money. And, and if you look at this great deal they already cut with, which is in their, which is in their, their packet, they talk about this great deal they cut with, where is it here? Was it Cambridge? Yeah, let's see. Coverage is currently scheduled through the end of March is estimated by EMS and wages, stipends and benefits, anticipated billings to be an estimated nine thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. This is dealing with the Cambridge area, okay? Some other agreement that they must have entered into.
Right.
So, so they spent, they spent nine thousand, okay, they brought in eleven thousand five hundred and eighty-five bucks. Well, that's what it cost them. That's what it cost them to do it. They're showing a deficit of two thousand three hundred and ninety, and ninety-eight dollars. So this was such a good deal with them, but they think they want to continue to do it. I mean, they're only losing twenty percent. I mean, you know, and who's making up the twenty percent? We know who makes it up when they have a deficit, right? And as I mentioned in our last meeting with the prior one, you know, as a lawyer, I like to pick my pro bono work. I'll tell you, as a citizen here in Cottage Grove, I really like to know when I'm making a donation and I just don't think that the people that live in the town of Deerfield really need us to buy them the equivalent of, how many Little Caesar five-dollar pieces would we be buying them here? Quite a few, right? Enough for at least one person, for every person that lives out there in the, in the town. It's pretty, it's pretty, I, I, I just, it just boggles my mind when I see stuff like this and maybe it's because of what I do for a living, but when you start looking at this stuff, it's like if you're selling widgets and, and you, and you're selling widgets for thirty bucks and last year you knew that you, that it cost you fourteen point eight four percent more because your suppliers were upping their charges, right? And it costs you forty-five bucks for, well, let's say for forty-five dollars for a, for widget. When someone comes in and they want to do, to, with this great contract, when your salesperson comes in, it's like, I got this great five-year contract and guess what? It only goes up, I know it only goes up one and a, one and a half percent a year, but it's at twenty bucks. So we're only going to lose, we're only going to lose twenty-five dollars on each one. That's the contract we're entering into, guys. That's exactly what we're entering into with these folks and no one seems to care. No one seems to care. And you know why? Because we just, every year when they come here, we say fourteen point eight four percent. Oh, that's okay, we'll do it because shucks we're tied into you guys. But you know, the reality is you can only go down that road so far with these ten percent a year raises and all the stuff they do. Their chief apparently just got back from a trip to DC. When you're losing money hand over fist, why in the world are you taking a trip to DC? You know, so you can go find out something that you couldn't figure out on the internet or here? I don't know. It, it boggles my mind and the thing is, this is an issue that eventually you folks will have to deal with because it's going to be so out of control, the thing's going to have to collapse. You cannot continue down this road of every year having these huge increases, entering into, to deals like this, which make absolutely on their face no sense. And I hope, I hope that tonight that we table this to give the citizens in Cottage Grove a chance to come in here and actually look at this and see what is actually going on with this group. I've been bringing this up as, I, I came on the board last year and I, and it's boggled my mind. Like I said, the entire time on the board, you look at a group, we sit around here and we complain about five hundred dollars being spent and then we just approved tens of thousands of dollars to these folks. It's just crazy. It's absolutely crazy. And to go into a deal where you're going to increase, you're going to lose, you're going to lose so much money on this that it's unbelievable and we're willing to do it and we're willing to just give the money to the, to the folks that live in the town of Deerfield. Wow. I'll tell you, it just shock, it's just shocking. And if I didn't have something every Thursday night that I, that I have a commitment, I would go to these meetings, but I can't. So this is my only forum to bring this up. So I hope you've tabled it so that you'll have a full board next month and you can really discuss this and decide what you think is best for the village of Cottage Grove versus what EMS thinks is best for them. And I'll tell you, my own personal experience with these types of groups is there's one thing they always want to do and it's grow, grow, grow. But it's like having two drunks hooking their feet together and saying, we're going to walk down the street. It makes no sense. And for these folks to talk about doing all the stuff they want to do, I would say, take this analysis every time they bring a thing, something to you, take the time, go through here, do the analysis and see whether this makes any sense. I can tell you, if this was your own money going into here, I think you would look at it a little differently than paying a few bucks. If you were putting a hundred thousand of your own money to this, would you invest with these folks? I doubt it. So anyway, that's my speech. Do what you think you need to do, but I tell you, I think that the folks there in the village should hold all of us accountable for this because this is out of control. It just frankly is out of control and eventually somebody is going to have to really deal with it.
I agree with you completely, Mick. I've seen it and I can tell you that I'm guessing town of Deerfield paid Ryan Brothers a lot more than thirty-three thousand a year for the EMS coverage. I agree we're hooking.
I mean, I'll, I'll let John and Troy explain, why is this such a hot deal? Why is this so good? Why did you, why did you make a motion or second this thing to be such a great deal to go forward? I mean, I ask those questions. We, we have representation there, although we can't control what happens, or at least we have representation on this board. I hope a message goes back, because these guys want to answer, they want to deal with this on Thursday. I hope the message goes back is we're tired of just being, getting, you know, a little, a bill from you guys every year saying, plug the numbers. We're, we're sick and tired of this. And the reality is we should be in control of this thing. If they would bring, if we had our own team here handling the accounting and doing some of these things here, I don't think we'd have the mess we certainly have that is out there currently. Just don't think that would, I just can't imagine that Matt's team would put up with this kind of stuff. Don't think so. Enough said.
Any comments, questions?
I guess my only comment is we're already supporting and running through and calling at least twenty-five percent of the calls within the town of Deerfield currently because it can't be handled and we have to do that because of mutual aid. That's a requirement. I would also, I, I agree with you that we should have more say at the table and we've I would also, I, I agree with you that we should have more say at the table and we've been fighting for that for a long time.
We're in a bad deal with, but that's a separate issue than this.
That's a separate issue. And I appreciate the, the analysis certainly here. The, uh, this particular deal was, uh, basically, we'll play it off of the Town of Pleasant Springs, which we currently have. So that's where it was drafted from, so that's its origin, so there's another bad deal in, in your, you know, analysis as well. It's awful tough to go out and pay under three hundred thousand to get our own service though. Um, and that's what we'd be facing. So I would say that this would probably be five, six times that for us to have our own service. We can certainly look at our police department, the cost there of having our own service without the town. So, that's a challenge. We do need a bigger voice at the table, I totally agree. And we do need to look at this agreement and challenge it, as you said. And we have challenged certain things along the way and it's, we do only have a third of the voice, or we're paying fifty-two or three percent of the cost.
And if I, I'll ask, why, why did you and Troy vote for this thing? Why did you vote for it? Why didn't you bring it up at the, at the meeting that there were issues that need to be addressed here? I mean, we need to take a strong voice here, guys. We really do with these folks because I don't think there's a whole lot of forethought going into a lot of what's, of what's going on out there. And, and we're the big piggy bank here. We just are. And, and if you look at what they have here, they're showing, and we only had forty percent of the calls and we're paying fifty-some percent of the, the rate. That just isn't right. That, that should not continue.
Yeah, we only have a third of the voice with the current agreement, so we're stuck with that unless we break it. Which, if this board chooses to, that's fine. But again.
When does the grid run up?
Twenty, twenty-two, something like that.
Right. And that, but you can give them a one-year notice, so basically by eleven fifty-nine PM on December thirty-first, you gotta say, we're outta here. That gives you a year notice and a year's time to come up with your own plan or figure out a new arrangement and maybe like make some force, force their hand and make them come to a more realistic agreement.
Mick, certainly expanded on what I was trying to get at, which is this whole percentage idea, whether it's this agreement or, or, I think that that's a, that's a worthy topic to bring up with the town. And to just say, you know, in any of these agreements, we've been carrying the load and we're not willing to do that anymore. And, or, and, and I think most of you have been around long enough to remember that when we raised this issue before, they just ignored it. I mean, it just wasn't.
Right, we, we've always been outvoted two to one even though we're paying almost rate. Same thing.
So, so in December, we have to make a choice, uh, to, to give them notice and then have a stronger negotiating position?
I think it'll, it's. You can start talking now because it's a hu, and, and for, just from a historical background, I mean, the village and the town, uh, were going to start their own service. And there was actually a, um, uh, an agreement worked out. And Mike Fonger actually told me that I had done a good job, so I treasured that. But then, nothing happened. And, uh, because, uh, I think the state stepped in and said, well, you know, you're not including Deerfield in this, et cetera, et cetera. But, I mean, that is, you know, I'm not telling you guys anything you don't know. I mean, it's a huge issue and it's been an issue for a long time.
That's the difference between EMS and the police department. When it's an ambulance service department, a health services gets involved and said, you have to at least offer them the same level of service they were getting, whether it's a contract for services or whatever. You cannot decrease your level of service, but you have to, if they don't wanna accept your offer, that's fine, but you have to at least offer them, say, we'll cover you with a contract for services, but we're doing our own thing because this is a dumb deal. And that's okay to do that.
So what, what are they, what are they paying Ryan Brothers? Can we find that out?
They're paying less than that now.
But then their people are paying more per call.
We're actually, D-Grove EMS is doing a fair number of the calls now.
Because of mutual aid, it just.
Because of mutual aid and they, they are paramedic service, we're a paramedic service, there's some, some calls that need a paramedic.
Right, Ryan Brothers will go based on whether it's BLS, ALS or paramedic. That's kinda how they send out their people.
Yeah.
It, you know, we get paramedics sitting around twenty-four, seven, two sixty-five, so it's always a paramedic level service even if they've got a, you know, a broken finger, whatever.
I have a, just a point on that. I mean, I'm looking right now at their runs for the first quarter. I don't see one run to the Town of Deerfield in here. I see Cottage Grove forty points five six percent. I see Deerfield at nineteen point two three percent. I see the Town of, of, uh, Cottage Grove at sixteen point seven eight percent. I see, uh, Pleasant Springs at seven point three four percent. I see Cambridge at three point eight five percent. I don't see one call in here to the Town of, of Deerfield. And so there's, there's two things. Either they're running them and they're not tracking them because they do have like a, let's see here, they don't even have a miscellaneous on here. So I don't know. Then maybe they don't track their calls when they go there, but it doesn't show up in their stats for the last quarter.
Maybe under mutual aid.
This has every single run. Why would, I don't see.
But does the quarter really tell us much? Don't we need longer-term data? 'Cause you get aberrations in the quarter or?
Well, that's a real concern I have and I wanted to bring it up also on this, I forgot to mention earlier. We have not seen their, their audited financial statements.
It'll be at this Thursday's meeting, come and join us.
I told you I can't on Thursday.
Well, you've, you've, you've explained for months about this and you'd never show up to one meeting to discuss it.
Because I said, I have something else in my mind, way more important.
Well, you're making that more important than this, so.
So what, um, so will that tell us, what, a year's worth of data accurate, audited, so?
Audit won't have, uh, it won't have, it broken out by where the calls were. The audit's just financial.
We just get the quarterly estimates? Would you say they're not audited?
We, we review calls every month.
Okay.
But it won't, the audit has nothing to do with the number of calls, meaning that it's not gonna list it. We did two hundred and twelve calls in the, in the Village of Cottage Grove, seventeen in, in, you know, Town of Deerfield and four hundred and three.
So we'd have to just take the monthly data and add it all up?
Yeah.
And try to call.
And usually you can get that probably less than thirty days past the month. I mean, it's, you can get it pretty quickly, but yeah, the audit, I think, is just the financial part of it.
Yeah, 'cause we don't wanna just look at monthly or quarterly. We wanna look at a little longer than that, I think. 'Cause that goes up and down.
Yeah. Uh, the, the data that Mick brought up about helping, um, the Village of, or helping Cambridge is, uh, the, what the numbers didn't reflect is that we had less missed calls that month, we had more staffing. So it actually generated more revenue than the nine thousand and some dollars that you mentioned and the twelve thousand that it cost.
All I can do is go what's in the report. I can only go by what's in the report.
Yeah, well, I'm just letting you know.
I mean, Mick, I think your point's well taken and I, I guess I'm fine with tabling this and, you know, discussing it next month or trying to let them know something different at a joint board meeting. It's, it's been, this is not just since John and Troy have been on the board, this has been since I've been on the board since two thousand and five. I mean, it's been a long perpetual.
But there, there are two separate issues. There's the agreement that we're under and there's this kind, those are two separate issues. And that, this will not fix or help the agreement that we're under between Deerfield, Town of Cottage Grove and Cottage Grove.
But let's make it clear here, there, it's, we're entering into a deal that we would love to have if we could get it, but we can't. So just dealing with this deal in front of us, why would we do this deal? Why would we, why would we say, go forward on a deal where we know we're subsidizing someone else? It makes, what sense does that make? I mean, and we're not talking a small amount here. I mean, that's, we're gonna pay two point one four times the amount that we're gonna pay. I mean, why shouldn't they be paying at least the same amount of money as we're paying based on mil rate? Why would you ever move off of that?
Well, no, they're, they're, what we're not looking at is like, you analogized it to business. You've got fixed costs and variable costs, right? And are, is their contribution covering at least the variable cost?
I wanna make a point on that. If you look at what the chief plans to talk about at this next meeting, he's already hired somebody else during the day. So he wants to take the thirty-three thousand and immediately go out and hire someone else to.
So the variable cost is, is increased and then that wipes out any, any contribution to fixed cost, but.
I'm guessing.
If, if he needs, if he really needs that. And then the question is, does that person, is that person needed if we don't enter into this agreement then? You know, that, you know what I'm saying? So. But you get my point about, is this contributing to variable or to fixed at all? 'Cause if it, if it pays one nickel of our fixed costs, we're, it's a win-win. They're winning big, we're winning small on a nickel. But I don't know, I don't know, I don't have enough information to be able to say that.
Well, I mean, I, I appreciate what you brought here, Mick. I mean, I'm fine with making a motion to table it if there's a second.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion and second to table the, uh, contract for services with the Town of Deerfield for Deer Grove EMS District. Any other discussion?
I got one question. Is it asking too much for the EMS chief to attend one of these meetings?
Absolutely not. I got his email, I can ask him to be here next meeting.
Yeah, please do. I just, I mean, obviously I don't sit on the subcommittee and I appreciate the work that you two folks do in there, but I, I don't have enough information to.
And I don't mind making it clear too, I mean, he's quite different than the former chief, he just took over, so he may not have the year's worth of, you know, the background, but I think he can certainly answer questions.
Answer some of the questions.
Yeah.
Tell him to break his statement.
But I can ask him to be at the next meeting if he wanna table this for next meeting, that's fine. Okay? Motion and second to table, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions?
Obstain.
Okay, one abstention. Motion to table till next month passes. Okay? Next, whoops, up here, sorry. That is, there we go. We are on emergency government. There we go. That's Troy.
Just pull that up here. Yeah, we met, uh, last week, uh, two weeks ago Wednesday. Went over a couple of things. There are some communication issues in the EOC building, uh, reception and stuff, so, uh, we had someone in there from US Cellular giving us some different ideas, whether we, uh, were to get cell phones and just utilize them as needed down there. The, the cost is minimum fifty cents a month and then if you actually use them, it's fourteen cents a minute, uh, per. Uh, there's also, um, a landline service available for twenty dollars a month. And then there is, um, uh, an option to, uh, do a, a service called WeBoost, which is you affix an outside antenna, bring it down into the, into the building, 'cause we're gonna ruin kind of a concrete all the way around. Uh, that would enhance cellular service, so those of us on committee have our own personal phones that we would get service then that we possibly wouldn't get now. Uh, they're gonna do a little bit more, um, research on that. Uh, we're gonna order some more, um, maps of the service area. Hydrate Chemical is willing to donate two thousand dollars towards, um, communication devices, anything we really need for emergency government. Um, so, um, police chief, EMS chief are gonna work with Hydrate on, on things that we see that might be needed. And some of these communication things will most likely be included in there. And then, um, an order of schools was in there and, uh, we discussed their go-to guide, basically every classroom, every room in the school, uh, in, in case of certain emergencies, has a guide as to if this happens, here's what you need to do. And if that happens, you go here, go there, that kinda thing. So. Uh, and then the next meeting is on, um, May second. At six three.
Troy, do any of the communication issues have to do with the incom? Or is that now?
No, that's a, that's a totally separate thing. It's just that we're in a concrete bunker basically and, and, uh, there is no good wifi service. So they're talking about maybe getting a, a, just a wifi unit in that so that we get good internet and stuff. 'Cause that's how we're gonna do, um, you know, if there's an emergency, um, web EOC, be able to log everything, log purchases, uh, log times of when certain things are happening. So.
So it's internet too, not just cell phone?
Yeah, so it's, it's internet, it's, it's communication in general.
Okay.
So.
But two different items. One was the, the tower that's gonna bring the cell service down there and the other one, they're looking into expanding the wifi.
And the fire department had a wifi issue too, I think.
Uh, they, they do and they're upstairs, so.
In their bay.
It's just a lot of concrete.
So they're looking to possibly fix the problem for both areas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the phone issues, you know, it's just like now if there's an emergency, we're robbing the, we're robbing the phone from the fire department, we're robbing a, a town, a town phone. There's one, one line is dedicated to, uh, the EOC, um, office down there, but, um.
Okay.
If we had some of that, it, it, we would be under, understaffed from the communication standpoint. Uh, and if we can't get good internet and stuff, difficult to do some of the things we need to do, so.
Absolutely. Okay? Uh, Community Development Authority on April ninth, I guess?
Yeah, so we met on April ninth. Most of the discussion is around, uh, the TID creation. We had Greg Johnson from Ellers, our financial, um, folks come in and kinda walk the committee through, uh, the process, uh, answering questions, um, kinda give us a, a, a flow of activity that we would wanna look for, um, including a public hearing, which is proposed for May twenty-second. And then the joint board and the creation, that creation is already ongoing when that should occur. So, um, that's kinda what the, uh, committee went through. Uh, we meet next on May fourteenth. Mick was kind enough to provide also an example for us as well from his experiences, which helped the committee, um, in recent TID creation that he was aware of. So that was also helpful. And in fact, the words I've done that one as well. Mick, anything else on that? This, again, this is creation of, uh, the one TID out by the interstate, the overlay across the street here and the one down by the CVS area. So we've already discussed that.
I think the one issue is whether the sisters are going to annex land in over by the, north of the highway. If they don't do it now, then there's a chance they will not be able to bring it into a TID for a while. So this would be the opportunity, they, they, to do that, they'll need to make that decision very soon if they're gonna do that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, Utility Commissioner.
Okay, uh, we met, uh, last Wednesday, April eleventh. Um, one of the agenda items is we did recognize Dave Wallace's contribution to the village. I think he moved out here in two thousand and five and point capacity or another, either committees or board, I served throughout his duration. Um, we discussed and considered approve the request for the zero lot line, basically splitting duplexes. And let's see, engineer report, progress drive was, uh, it was on schedule as of, uh, last week. Mike, any update on that? Supposed to.
Yeah, I'll spike it and down with the director's set, so it's mostly restoration.
Obviously, uh, we have the main street lift station has been awarded. Uh, there has not been a pre-construction meeting as of last week yet. Uh, discussed West Lawn fourth addition, uh, Parkside Ridge subdivision and Quarry Ridge subdivision. And then for the director's report, um, JJ gave an update on the, uh, upnet has been installed, antennas in North Tower. I think he was actually leaving that meeting to meet with the point of contact that night. But up until, uh, last Wednesday, everything was, uh, communicating as, uh, planned. That's really it, unless I missed anything.
Quarry Ridge, he has an attorney now and they seem to be, this group seems to be intent on going forward, so.
Yeah, it's been sitting stagnant for a while.
They have equipment out there moving around, so that's good.
Okay. All right, we are on to the Plan Commission and this is from our previous meeting, uh, last week. Item A, discuss and consider approval of a zero lot line certified survey map application from Tony Curtnut to separate the parcel located at six fifty-two Damascus Trail into two parcels. It's pretty straightforward there and just maybe I have a couple of details, but I don't think there was anything major involved with this.
It's an existing duplex, duplex located, uh, just north of CVS, um, looking to split it in two to allow the current owner to sell the other half. This was approved with a couple of conditions at the Plan Commission. Uh, one, we need them to dimension the width of the parcels on the CSM. And then, um, there were some concerns about the formatting and the maintenance agreement, so Lee's gonna work with them on, uh, getting that the way he wants it. That was the other condition. Spoke with Mr. Curtnut this afternoon and he seemed okay with all that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the zero lot line certified survey map application from Tony Kurtner to separate the parcel located at six fifty-two Damascus Trail into two parcels. Is there a second?
Point of order, does that include the changes that are being requested?
Correct, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, with the requested changes and dimensions and that sort of.
And also in terms of reviewing the maintenance.
Yep, for a recordable document, yeah. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and second to approve, any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Next item, discuss and consider approval of a certified survey map application from Scott Frank to separate a new two acre parcel from an existing sixty-six point three acre parcel located at nineteen eighty Rathard Road in the Town of Cottage Grove, and this is because it's within the Village of Cottage Grove's extraterritorial jurisdiction. If I am correct, he was parceling off some for his children or something, I think that was the gentleman.
Yeah.
Okay.
Creating a new small lot for a new house for his.
Yeah.
For his son. It's been approved by the town and by the, by Dean County. We didn't have any conditions on it at the plan commission, so it's good for me to approve.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second to approve the application for a certified survey map from Scott Frank to separate a two acre parcel from existing sixty-six point three acre parcel at nineteen eighty Rathard Road in the Town of Cottage Grove, because it's within our Village of Cottage Grove's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Sean, if you want to come up here for this one, now discuss and consider resolution twenty eighteen oh three, approval of twenty eighteen Village of Cottage Grove's park and open space plan. Looks like we went through a lot of work, I mean, I think there's a pretty nice plan laid out here. If anybody has any questions for Sean on this, but I think he did a really good job of trying to get this together. Aaron, sorry.
I guess my comment is it's, it's quite extensive and that's great to see and obviously this is, is needed to have a plan, just like we have a comprehensive plan. The only question I have is related to just some of the proposed expenses or improvements coming up, particularly in twenty twenty, knowing that earlier we talked about the bike trail probably hitting whatever costs were going to occur there. There's, by my, my count, well in excess of a million dollars proposed for twenty twenty and do we have a plan on how we're going to actually come up with a million dollars?
These are based off the current capital plan, I mean, each, that funding has to be approved each year by the board, so they're not obligated to that just because it's in this plan, certainly things can be arranged within the context of all the other spending the village does, not just park related, but this is, does have a basis in that existing capital.
Yeah, my only recommendation, probably would want to scooch some of those out, just to, because knowing that they're probably going to have a larger expense with that bike trail and then Clark Street. And maybe we just need to adjust the capital plan to take that into account. I don't know if we've got the bike trail in there, because we did that before the bike trail was.
Yeah, there, I think there's some portions that, some improvements that involved that along Clark Street and then on Vilas Road, but I don't think, probably not all the recommendations that will go through the bike committee. And then the financial management plan is reviewed this summer.
Okay.
So Greg Johnson from Mellers will be here and we can take a look at that five-year outlook at that time, so.
And again, it's only a plan, but that's just what I know.
Any other questions for Sean or Matt or Aaron? I just want to thank them for putting this together, I appreciate it. If not, I'll take a motion to approve if somebody wants to make one.
I'll motion to approve the twenty eighteen Village of Cottage Grove parks and open space plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Motion and second to approve the resolution twenty eighteen oh three, the twenty eighteen Village of Cottage Grove Park and Open Space Plan. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes, thank you for your work. Down to reports from village officers, Troy?
Uh, no report.
Okay, Mick?
Uh, no report.
James?
No report.
Hey, Jeff?
None.
Okay, John?
Just a reminder, I think everyone on the board should have received an email from the Chamber of Commerce, they're looking for volunteers for, it's in conjunction with Fireman's Festival for the Hot to Trot.
Oh, yeah.
I know it's your. Are you going to run or are you going to volunteer?
No, I'm actually leading the five K on my bike.
Nice.
So, leading out the five K, it's.
Nice.
Got to ride five K on my bike, I think I can do it.
Okay.
I'd like that, volunteer.
John, anything else?
The only thing I would like to say is just thank Mick for his service.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's been nice working with him on the CDA as well as the board.
Okay. Under my name is the appointment to citizen member to utility commission, I do have a person who's actually now on the police commission and if, I guess if that's not a conflict she asked, how can I be more involved in, I'm like, well, if, if, so Lee, if that's okay, if somebody's on the police commission, I can have them on utility as well, I would think.
Yeah, I think that.
Not a problem.
Included from.
Otherwise, if somebody else has another name, I'm sure she'd let somebody else do it too, but she did ask about being more involved in it since Dave was giving this up, so if that's okay, I'll talk to her, her name is Joanna Williams, so I guess at this point, I'll nominate her for utility commission and if anybody else would like to second that, I'll let you know.
I'll second it. She's got a good last name.
Okay.
Not related.
Right.
What are the odds?
Motion then second to appoint Joanna Williams to utility commission, any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. All right, Attorney Lee Boucher.
Lee Chair, I'd like to remind people why this meeting is called the lame duck meeting. Certainly not directed at you Mick, but for all the lame ducks that have been on the board. The expression lame duck originally applied in eighteenth century Britain to bankrupt businessmen who were considered lame in the sense that the impairment of their powers rendered them vulnerable, like a game bird injured by shot. And it took till the eighteen thirties to have it applied to office holders, so. And I think all of us want to thank Mick and I don't think that people really understand how much time gets put in by all the board members and whether you agree or disagree on certain issues, their input has been really invaluable and, and I want to thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Matt?
I didn't have a chance to mention this earlier, under the fireworks item, we did ask a survey question on Polco, get some feedback. There, there were seventeen registered, registered voters in the village that were in favor of banning the sale and there were thirteen that were not. And then if you, if you guys want to log on there, there were three, three comments under the yes ban section, there were no comments under no, just for some other feedback if you guys are interested. And then TDS has approached, they met a while back with Jack and I, and they're looking to potentially bring high-speed fiber optic to, throughout the village. If you might see something in the paper in the next, in the next week or so, the village of McFarland just entered into a deal with them and, so that they were looking to come potentially in May to discuss this with the board and there would be some form of an agreement that would, would enter, enter into if the board is so interested, so.
I mean, we had a fairly detailed meeting and I'm sure it would be nice to ask them the questions and, you know, see where we're at with it.
Yeah, let's break you in, but yeah.
I know a lot of people would like an alternative to what we have, it just, we want to do this and go down this road, because it is a, not cheap, but it is a good investment, so.
That's it. Matt, if I can ask on the Polco, I can't even say it right, there is what, agree, disagree and strongly disagree? Three different answers on that or is it just the two?
It was just yes or no.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Okay. All right, Aaron, anything else?
Uh, no report.
Okay, Chief Labor?
Just an update on the tactical situation from last night, the subject pointed a rifle at our officers when they arrived, a domestic situation and then after an hours-long standoff out in the street, he was taken in custody and is going to be charged with various felonies. We didn't find out until this afternoon that he actually fired a round off in the house before he came outside, so. We're lucky nobody got hurt last night and the officers used appropriate discretion in not shooting him, which frankly, they could have if they hadn't used their restraint, so. Happy to see nobody got hurt.
Yeah.
Very good.
Good job. Okay. JJ, Director of Public Works, update on Alliance street light audit? I know they just put one in by my house on the new street lights and it's, it's different.
Yeah.
LED.
Yeah.
It's definitely a shadow.
Yeah.
Well, we don't get any savings from those LED even though they are more efficient. That I learned in my conference call. It was a matter of when you pack it, basically they conducted audits all across the communities. Turns out they hadn't been adding a lot of our streetlights for the last, I'm thinking fifteen or so years. Basically, you can look at it glass half full or glass half empty, there's nothing really we can do about it, but they also aren't back billing us. So our monthly bill's going to go up, they had the capability as a PSC regulated utility, they could back bill us up to forty-four thousand dollars, so. But I also learned quite a bit during our conference call that they're recommending to their customer communities like us that have not put the upfront cost on developers as they've come in, and they said they're not sure if people want to, where they could do this or if there was pushback at the time, but essentially, that's why I put their tariff in the packet. When development comes to plan to the board, we can have the pole and fixture contribution costs, which vary depending on what you put in, usually we put in the concrete poles with the ninety-five hundred lumens, hundred HPS lights, but basically that'd be probably a few thousand dollars at the time, but then our monthly cost, our monthly cost on that pole then in perpetuity goes from two thirty-seven down to thirty-eight dollars a month, or a year, I'm sorry. So.
Say those number again?
Uh, it's, the, the lights we use typically are two hundred and thirty-seven dollars a year, sorry, we pay monthly, so whatever that breaks out two months, nineteen dollars. And it would, if we had the contribution upfront from developers, they go to thirty-eight dollars a year, three dollars a month. We cannot, I immediately asked if we can do anything retroactively and can't, so.
Okay.
Again, there's not a lot we can do on the information they shared from the audit, but moving forward, we can.
Can we throw any of that cost into tints or is that a lot?
We actually can do that if it relates back to, if I may ask, if it relates back to the development that's going to occur within the TID and it actually doesn't, when you're looking at electrical systems and things like that, it can be something that doesn't have to be within the one-half mile boundary if you're looking at something like that, too.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do that if we can.
Yeah. Okay. Otherwise, if there's any questions on it.
So what is this going to affect us going forward?
Essentially, our monthly bill goes up.
Up two grand.
Starting now, yep, eighteen hundred and some dollars and then, so yeah, about twenty-two thousand plus in next year's budget for streetlight.
To make that, moving forward for new developments, to make that part of the agreement, they developer pays for the poles, what do we need to do to make that happen if we still decide to do it?
It's already been, being added to the, the developer agreements that were.
Okay, all right, so we don't need to do anything as a board then?
No, they'll be approving the, they'll be approving the developer agreement as, as it comes up and we can point it out. If at some point in the spring, you'd like to have me, you know, bring a developer agreement so that everybody can see what it looks like and, you know, we can certainly do that and talk about some of the areas that, that are in there.
No, I just wanted to make sure that we were tackling that, that we can avoid that.
But the, but the line would get to tell the developer, you need one here and here and over here, kind of a thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, communication and miscellaneous business, discuss and consider approval of vouchers, any comments, questions on vouchers?
Yeah, JJ, on the vouchers, what's the core and main charges that we have on that?
That's the new name of HD supply, so typically water stop, if it's a big number, forgive me, it's our water heaters most likely.
Oh.
But they've changed from HD supply to core and main.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve as presented.
Okay. All right, I'll second. Motion and second to approve vouchers as presented, any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Correspondence, I have nothing official. Future agenda items would be the, I guess, the Deer Grove, Town of Deerfield agreements. Potential joint meeting, I guess, well, no, we had that before the next board meeting, so we're okay with it. Anything else? The fireworks?
Yes.
What else am I missing, anything?
Greg, Greg Johnson from Mellers will be here to discuss a resolution authorizing to go up for a bond sale for those utility projects, the force main and lift station that he previously been approved of, we need to do a, a bond sale.
All right.
And the EMS chief coming.
And I'll invite the EMS chief, I'll tell him, so for our first meeting in May.
We had offered to, to give us a closed session and a history on boundary.
Oh, yeah, we could put that on for a closed session, so we can understand.
Uh, here, okay, so when you, you're going to have your meeting with the town before we talk about it.
Right.
So you may want to just kind of, well, you can do your report, whatever you want, you may want to just suggest that we haven't had an opportunity to discuss it and, you know, kind of table that as an item.
Yeah, we're just going to discuss it anyways.
Sure, it's worth to see what.
We'll jump in there.
If they have a proposal, we can come back with this, okay? All right, anything else for future agenda?
We have a weekends.
Oh, yeah, we can, building inspection contract, yep. Okay, anything else?
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn, non-debatable, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.